It's five o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to rise for the invocation delivered by Reverend Gary Hager, Westview Baptist Church. Thank you Reverend Hager.
Let us pray. Thank you Lord for our mayor and commissioners. May you grant it to them the spirit of unity and the bond of peace. This doesn't win votes, but it gets attention. It doesn't promise that we'll get our way, but it teaches truth. Your way is the best way. God forbid that we should ever go any other way. We've tried those ways and they're all dead end streets. So we pray that you will give this commission a sense of recommitment to the matter of unity and harmony, confidentiality and purity and love and tolerance and patience and gentleness and humility. May they model that unity as they are seated before you and the citizens of this great city and may they model it at home and at work and in church this coming Sunday. As you grow us in unity, grow us deep that our hearts will be rooted deep within and there will be fruitfulness as a result. May you bless each and every member here today. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. And I'll ask this Commissioner Haynes will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. You may have a seat. Clerk, will please call a roll.
Mr. Roach?
Here.
Mr. Haynes?
Here.
Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, minutes are approved. At this time, we'll have some ceremonial items. And one item today is the retirement of Patrol Officer Mike Johnson, who's been with the city for 20 years. I've known Mike for, I guess, that whole time. And he's got a wonderful wife who's been supportive over the years and three wonderful children. So this is the time when we will present some, a plaque and I know the chief has some items as well. So Chief, I'll let you do that while I'm coming on.
Thank you very much. It's quite an honor here for me to present Detective Johnson with his retirement badge. Detective Johnson's been an officer with Frankfurt Police Department since 1993. In fact, he, when he first came on, he came on to my ship, was on from '93 to '96 to where he took his first assignment in criminal investigations. He was in criminal investigations for four years till the year 2000 and went back on the street as a field training officer. Was back on the street for another five years until 2005 and he went back into Criminal Investigations Division. During his tenure, Detective Johnson has been a member of the Honor Guard. He's a hostage negotiator. He's one of the first graduates of the state's criminalistic academy, which is a $400 hour training. Very long and arduous academy that we were proud that he graduated from. So Detective Johnson's been, he's always been a high performer in the police department. As a detective, he always took the high profile cases. As a coworker, now you may get me on my chemistry, but if you have a base and an acid, you know, you have to mix all that up to get the proper pH, well, Mike would be the acid. So, which is the type of person you need to be a high performer as a detective. I mean, he's a bulldog on his cases. He won't take no for an answer. He will dig and dig and dig and he, he doesn't like to be, he doesn't like to be stopped. And that's the kind of person you'd have to have for him. Mike has just done an outstanding job for us and, you know, he's, of course, retiring with 20 years service and hopefully he's, he's young enough to find another job that he'll enjoy as much as he did this one. But Mike, also, one other thing about Mike, he's our unofficial president of the U of L alumni club. So he's been insufferable this year, but years past, we've been able to get him. But Mike, I'd like to present you, Mike's wife Melissa's here too, by the way, in the audience. But Mike, I'd like to present you with your retirement badge. Congratulations. It's well deserved and well honored.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you Chief. As I said, Melissa, thank you for allowing Mike to come and be with us for 20 years. I know how tough it can be at home when your husband goes to work as a police officer. And I know you've been supportive as your three lovely children have been. It's hard to imagine that you'll have a 17-year-old. But I remember watching these children be, when they were born and grow up, so this is hard to imagine 20 years ago about that quickly. But we do want to give you this certificate of appreciation that you can put on your wall tomorrow, knowing you've done a nice retirement ceremony. Also, just so you all know, I'll be giving a proclamation tomorrow. The plan tomorrow is Mike Johnson Day, which gives Mike the privileges of being able to do what he wants.
Nice.
He did that anyway.
I know, I was thinking, not that he did that, but this is a City of Frankfurt certificate of appreciation and it's granted to Mike Johnson for 20 years outstanding service to the citizens of Frankfurt. We do appreciate your service and glad you were able to get through without having any serious injuries or having to drag you off and shoot anyone, which is a testament too. So thank you all so much and we wish you continued success.
Thank you. Well, as the chief said, I did start out under him and I think he only chewed me out one time in 20 years, but I still remember it. It's been a very fast 20 years, but it's been a very rewarding career and I'd just like to thank you for allowing me to serve the City of Frankfurt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Absolutely. Mr. Hayden.
Good luck with your retirement and whatever you choose to do and I look forward to celebrating Mike Johnson Day tomorrow.
Everybody take a day off.
Take a day off, right?
Anyone else? All right, thank you so much.
I would just like to tell him that if in your post-retirement career you find yourself dissatisfied, come on back to the city.
Thank you. I'll leave my jacket at Tuckton Center. All right, next item is the citizens' comment. This is the portion of our meeting where we allow citizens to come forward and discuss issues or ask questions and we allow up to five minutes time for that. And if anyone's here, I will recognize you. Please come forward.
Ms. Gibbs said I can go first. She's going to be more.
It's all right. And just if you don't mind for the record, just state your name. You don't have to state your address, but just state your name, please.
My name is Debbie Brammidge and I live in Frankfurt, Kentucky. I can't help but remark that I must have worked for the wrong department all this time because being a bulldog got me in more trouble than it got me kudos, but that's okay. The second thing that I want to say is that I think of late I have come off as being negative about the park department and that is the far, or our parks, farthest thing from the truth because we have wonderful parks with lots of potential and we have a lot of good people here. It has always been my feeling that no matter how good something is, it can always be better and we should be striving for that. And an individual who strives for that shouldn't be told that if she doesn't like her job, go find another one. So that's kind of where I'm coming from because we have wonderful things happening in a lot of our parks, a lot of the time, but there's still room for improvement. Now, I'm here to ask you specifically this evening if you would remove item 7.7 from your list of consent or whatever. I dropped some materials off for you today. I don't know if any of you had time to look at them, but I basically feel that at this time it's premature to be seeking a grant when you don't have personnel in place who are qualified to facilitate that grant. I also think there's some issues there. For example, the three parks that were suggested for this grant could be activated, two of them, Coke Spring and Fort Hill. I don't know how children are expected to get there safely on their own during the day. And I'd like to see Bell Point added to the mix instead. I haven't had time to think it through enough to think where my third place and I'm delighted to see Dollogram included there. I'm also concerned with things that, for example, this grant, while it didn't require a match, one of the criterion was that there be the potential to seek matching funds and also a backup plan if its program is successful for it to be carried on and how that would be funded when these funds were gone. At a time when you all are looking at a long-range goal of reducing personnel costs, the park department said here that they'll just spend their own budget for more materials or whatever's necessary. I think there's, there are just things that need to be looked at here and the bottom line is that the deadline for this grant application was January 25th. It was an online process. It can't be accessed anymore and I see that as maybe, if not a divine revelation, divine order at work, that this is an opportunity for the park department to develop a long-term plan, define their mission and generate a mission statement, none of which are in place at this time. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brammidge. Ms. Gibbs, your one.
My name is Ann Gibbs and I'd like to speak to the possibility of a City Human Rights Commission. I don't think it's necessary. People in this area, Frankfurt, Franklin County, Frankfurt and Franklin County, surrounding counties are sufficiently politically sophisticated to know that the state has a State, has a Human Rights Commission and should people have a problem on the local level, that's where they're going to take it. A local Human Rights Commission is redundant. It's something that looks good, but it's not necessarily going to be that effective. Another problem I have with this concept concerns LGBT, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender people. They are not included on state level. They are not included on federal level of human rights violations, commissions, whatever you want to call it. And I have a problem with the city enacting an ordinance or a resolution that's stronger than federal and state requirements. I'm not real sure that's legal. I'm not real sure that it's necessary. Those people that come under that particular term have the same rights as what's commonly called straight people, to find a job with benefits. And please note, the word is benefit, it's not a requirement. The city, any other employer does not have to offer their employees medical insurance or an opportunity to buy dependent family insurance. This is not a requirement for any employee to take a job. If you don't like it here, and I'm sorry, Ms. Brammidge, but if you don't like it here, try to find a job someplace else that offers what you want. I'm not necessarily one of those that's morally opposed or morally in approval of people covered under that, those particular terms, but I know on a religious basis, on a moral basis, it's repugnant to some people. Consumption of alcohol is repugnant to me, very repugnant, but this city allows alcohol consumption on Sundays. Losing the right to smoke in public is repugnant to me because I'm a smoker, but this city does not allow me to smoke in a public building in here. Regardless of how the property owner, the business owner feels, I'm not allowed to smoke in there. That business owner, that property owner may have the same strong feelings about people involved with the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, whatever it is, term. And I don't think those people should be required to employ somebody if it is in opposition to their moral viewpoint. I don't think it's fair for the city to impose that on people. And that's why I'm strongly against the city establishing a Human Rights Commission. It's not that I'm not in sympathy with what a Human Rights Commission embodies. Every one of us in here is in sympathy with that and certainly every one of us in here is supportive of it. But if you're going to do something, do something useful. And I can't see that this is going to be useful in any way other than making the city look good before the 2012 Municipal Equality Index. Now, if those people wanted a true overview, they should look at the complaints filed under those areas and what the particular jurisdictions have done to solve those complaints, not whether or not you have an ordinance. An ordinance isn't worth squat unless it's enforced and this city had a spitting ordinance on its books for years. And as Mayor May can speak to, this ordinance was never enforced. So why bother? Just why bother? I noticed there was some discussion in Friday's meeting about building an indoor recreation facility. As soon as you pay off the city public safety building, that's a time to think about building another building, definitely not before. The city hasn't got the money to do it. And I notice in here, everybody's committed to balancing the budget with spending cuts and not tax increases. The city's reached a point it can't cut spending without cutting services. Now, I want to hear what each one of you five think about what services to cut and how much you're going to cut them before you come back telling me you've got a fiscal problem here. I know you've got a fiscal problem, but don't, don't talk to cutting expenses. All right, five minutes are up. Am I allowed to ask for 30 seconds?
Sure.
Thank you. We also express concern over the actions of the Building, Planning and Building Codes Department and the Architecture Review Board. Those two boards and the employees in that department are simply enforcing the ordinances that the five of you have enacted. There's not a problem with the employees. If there is, it's because you don't have enough employees in building and codes inspections to allow those people to do the jobs. You look at the ordinances, not at people. You pass the ordinances, you review the ordinances, you change them. But please, don't blame it on the employees or the ARB board. It's not their fault.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, respond?
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Hayden.
Ms. Gibbs, thank you as always. As for the ordinances, I think that during our discussion, the paper doesn't really portray everything that we did talk about, but there was a...
I would have been here Friday had I known there was a meeting and what was going to be on it.
I understand it. It's my understanding that it was released to the press, the failure for it to get out and I'm sorry.
That's not your fault, but it is a problem.
Yes. Where do you typically look to get the information so I can?
The paper.
The paper?
I'm not a computer lawyer at all.
Okay.
Frankly, I don't want to.
Okay. Can you just look at the cap? Just in the Thursday paper, I guess it would have been in, Wednesday? Anyway.
It was faxed Thursday morning.
Okay. As for the ordinances, I think we all understood in our discussions, I don't want to speak for anyone else, but we are going to look at all the ordinances in the planning and zoning. The State Journal has a tendency to just kind of limit its space within our topics to bring up certain subjects. As for the recreational facilities, it's my intent to not try to build anything yet, but at least be build-ready so that we have a community and we understand what the community wants with a recreation center so that when we have more funding, we're already ready to hit the ground and build versus trying to build a huge temple that we don't have anything to pay for. But that we're at least ready and that we have infrastructure and we understand where we're going to go, how we're going to do it, when we're going to do it, and then when the money's there, we build it.
Did you want to, were you asking a question? Because your time's actually up unless she asks you a question.
I know, but I, I have some information that might be...
Do you, well, Commissioner Hayden, do you want to ask?
I won't say important, but it might be helpful to...
I'm fine to hear whatever she has to say if anyone else...
You're asking her a question? I'll let you ask a question. What's the question?
There was a...
That's the question? What's your question?
I don't know how to ask this in the form of a question. I'll try and flex you. There was a, an effort made, and perhaps Mayor, you can help me, as to when, a survey, particularly of building codes, was about 10 years ago.
Where's Karen?
Maybe not that long. I think maybe when Andy Lason was on. So you three new ones that are here, to an extent, this field has been plowed so that you may not have to do it again. If you want to look at the notes from their meetings and discuss with the people who were on the board at that time, what they did, why they did it and so on, it might save you all doing work, it's reinventing the wheel, I think's what you're trying to say. Doing work that's already been done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, did you have further?
No, I do not.
Okay, I don't know who had their hand up first, so Commissioner, I'll choose Commissioner Bowers.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers.
Commissioner Bowers, go ahead.
Well, I think if I understood back years ago, we did have a board that went through all of that and actually stiffened it up and I think, if I'm understanding, we had a conversation the other night where we actually talked about maybe relaxing that a little bit, am I right? So relaxing the code rather than stiffening it in terms of having fewer regulations as opposed to more, having fewer and actually being able to enforce the ones we do have rather than having code that we can't keep up with in terms of... So it was about relaxing, not increasing or changing so much.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, how about you?
Um, yes, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Roach?
Thanks, Ms. Gibbs, for your comments. Just a couple of quick things to reemphasize what Commissioner Bowers said. We didn't, when we talked the other night, we weren't talking about anybody on the Architectural Review Board or any of the code. It wasn't a personnel thing. It was just looking at those. And you're right, they were done, I think, in the early 2002, 2003, but like Commissioner Bowers said, I think the thoughts were we would analyze them and see if we had something that we didn't need and then try to have fewer ones and try to enforce those, hoping that if there are fewer rules, we could then entice more capital into Frankfurt so we could have more jobs. As far as the recreation building, we in no way are starting building tomorrow. This is just something that people all over town have asked about, so we want to be prepared if it's possible. There are ways to do it that cost the city relatively little. Those are the ways I hope happens, but I realize things don't always work out that way. But we are, we are looking at that and by no means are we spent, getting ready to start spending money. And as far as spending cuts, I think there, I think there has been a lot done, but I think there are areas we can look at and with the latest occupational tax increase, there are, there is more revenue coming in and so I think we can look at that and find some things. I'm, I'm sure there's just not a magic wand that we'll wave and all of a sudden have a bunch, but I think there's things we can do. But thank you for your comments.
We'll look for that wand.
We're looking for that wand.
Thank you, Karen. All right, if there's no other, we'll move to the ordinances. We have two ordinances. We have a first reading on one and a second reading on one. At this time, if there's any, well, first I need an...
Ordinance...
Ordinance read 4.1. Give it a second reading by title and summary only, please.
Ordinance 4.1 by title and ordinance amending sections 39.04, 39.07, 39.12, 39.16, 39.17, 39.20, and 39.21 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordnances. And by summary, this ordinance amends the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ethics by making technical clarifications, adding a definition of department head, requiring department heads to file statements of financial interest, changing the date for the filing of statements of financial interest to February 28th of each year, increasing the number of members of the Board of Ethics to five, allowing an ethics complaint to be filed with the chairperson of the Board of Ethics, and stating that requests for advisory opinions and the opinions themselves shall be public documents unless otherwise provided by the State Open Records Act.
Okay, is there a motion or questions? Commissioner Bowers?
I may, we adopt this ordinance.
Move back Commissioner Bowers. Second about Commissioner Hayden, is there any further discussion? See none, clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, ordinance 4.1 is adopted. Next item is item 4.2. I'd ask the solicitor to read it also by title and summary only, please.
Title and ordinance amending Frankfurt Code of Ordnances, Chapter 32, Section 32.03, Meetings. Summary, this ordinance provides that as of March 1, 2013, the Board of Commissioners will meet in work session on the second Monday of each month at 5:00 PM and meet in a voting meeting on the fourth Monday of each month at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Just so the new commissioners will know, this only requires a reading. We don't have to vote on it. Is there any questions on that one? See none, we'll move forward. Next item is orders. We have one order 5.1. If there are any questions on, on this, we'll accept those. If not, we'll entertain a motion for this order. It's an order renaming Wild Turkey Road at Capitol View Park to Capitol View Park Drive. Move back Commissioner Haynes?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bowers. Any further discussion? See none, clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
I guess.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, adopt. Now, we move into resolutions. See no resolutions. We're in the consent calendar, last city manager to read the consent items and just so the new commissioners will know at the end of the consent calendar unless someone has filed. And let me recognize, Commissioner Bowers, do you have a point?
I was going to ask if 7.7 being removed for tonight?
Does anyone else want to remove 7.7 for tonight?
It's not.
It's okay. Now, let me also say with procedural, on consent calendar items, the way we'll do it is unless members have filed a vote modification form with the city clerk, then you will be considered to have voted in the affirmative. And all we have to do is just make a motion to move the consent calendar and we'll do it by consensus vote unless someone still wants to. If you have a chance, if you'd like to take a chance now to file a vote modification form, we do so. And if there's discussion, then I would recommend that we do take 7.7 off the consent calendar and put it into the regular calendar if you want to talk about it.
I think we do need to talk about it.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll remove it. If there's no objection, we'll remove it, put it into under new business? Or is it... Or could it be under old business?
We'll move it to under second.
Let's put it under new business. We'll make it...
It may have to be moved forward because one of the principles, Rebecca Hall is not here today.
Okay. So we'll put it under 10... It'll be 10.1 under new business. And also typically, under consent calendars, there are items that we don't want to debate, but since there is someone that wanted to talk about it, it's better to take it off and just discuss it.
Yes.
So if anyone has not had a chance to file a vote modification form to mean that you'd like to vote no on the consent items or have to abstain for any type of conflict of interest, then we will go ahead and proceed with consent calendar minus 7.7. So I'll call the city manager to briefly go over the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 7.1, to authorize the disposal of surplus property in the Fire Department, a 1998 Ford ambulance is surplus property and authorize its sale by electronic auction or public auction in the city's next surplus auction sale event. Proceeds of the sale will be deposited in the EMS budget equipment account for future purchases. 7.2 is an item to authorize the mayor to sign a full release of mortgage for property located at 455 Jones Lane. Comes from the Sewer Department. Subsequent to construction of the Jones Lane project, we had a number of residents sign promissory notes and second mortgages to pay off sewer capacity fee over time. The property owner of 455 Jones Lane has signed a promissory note and mortgage is sincebit paid for the amount owed in full. The document will be filed with the Office of the Clerk of the Franklin County Court to release the second mortgage. 7.3 is to authorize a surplus and sale of property no longer used by the Sewer Department and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. The various pieces of equipment and vehicles are to be declared as surplus, are listed in your agenda books. Funds for the sale will be deposited in the sewer account. 7.4 is to authorize approval of change order number one to award additional funds and contract time for the construction contract with Kenny Construction for construction of approximately 12,460 feet of gravity sewer and force main and an 800 gallon per minute pump at Boone National Guard and to authorize the mayor to sign all documents relating to the project. In June 2010, a contract was entered into with Kenny Construction for the new pump station at Boone Guard, which would remove three existing stations. Amendment one, in the amount of $26,625.50, covers additional electrical changes needed for the station to be electrical code and 230 linear feet of directional bore to avoid multiple stormwater lines found during construction. This project, or these changes, will also add 14 days to the contract period. The original contract was for $1,462,205. With the change order, the total project is $1,488,830.50. 7.5 is to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with Franklin County Fiscal Court for construction of a stormwater outfall from Whopping Street to the Kentucky River. Franklin County Fiscal Court has received a grant for a project to install permeable pavement in Catfish Alley at the construction of the new courthouse. Stormwater that does not permeate into the ground is currently entering into the combined sewers. This project would remove that water. Under this MOA, the Sewer Department would reimburse the county in an amount not to exceed $120,000 to cover the cost of this project. This project could be used as an early action plan for the combined sewer long-term control plan. Funds are available in sewer's budget. 7.6 is to authorize negotiations of an engineering agreement and advertising for the reconstruction of two combined sewer penetrations beneath the South Frankfurt flood wall and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. During the last inspection by the Corps of Engineers, it was discovered that there were two pipes that carried combined sewage underneath the section of the South Frankfurt flood wall, and they were in serious disrepair. The Sewer Department is currently negotiating with Strand and Associates, which is a firm currently working on our long-term control plan to design the necessary repairs. This engineering agreement will be presented to the February commission meeting. This project is not expected to exceed $150,000, but the final cost will not be known until the design phase is complete. Of course, 7.7 has been removed, moved later to the agenda. 7.8 is to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between Benefit Marketing Solutions LLC and the City of Frankfurt. This is relating to Cobra compliance for the city's health, vision, dental, and FSA, HRA benefit programs. The item 7.8 you have in front of you that was not in your agenda book, it was placed to you, that is the agreement. Consolidating this responsibility with Benefit Marketing Solutions is expected to result in a $3,100 annual savings to the city. 7.9 is to authorize the purchase of five 12-lead cardiac monitor defibrillators and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. Frankfurt Fire and EMS has been awarded two separate grants for the purchase of cardiac monitor defibrillators. Kentucky Office of Homeland Security has awarded a grant of $30,000 for the purchase of one monitor. And FEMA Department of Homeland Security has awarded a grant for $119,760 for the purchase of four monitors, requiring a 10% match from the city. Bids for the monitors were advertised and opened on January 11th with Physio Control Incorporated being the only bidder. We recommend that the commission award this bid. 7.10 is personnel. Now, omitted from your agenda was one promotion, and that's Eugene Carr in Public Works from Tech 4 to Transit Foreman to be effective 1/29/13. The other promotions are Doug Young from Licensed Enforcement Officer 2 to Code Enforcement Inspector 1, Jeremy Warren from Public Works Tech 2 to Licensed Enforcement Officer 1, Greg Rogers from Transit Foreman to Transit Superintendent, the retirements of Paul Clark, Transit Driver, and Michael Johnson, Police. In addition to Michael Johnson, authorizing payment for accrued leave, ask the commission to authorize a purchase of his two duty weapons per Frankfurt Code of Ordnances 40.03. Also, we have four appointments, four new appointments for telecommunicators, Benjamin C. Sullivan, Amanda D. Roberts, Wesley A. Willis, and Tyler F. Owens. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Mayor approves... I believe we approve the consent calendar.
Move back Commissioner Bowers. Second, about Commissioner Haynes. All those who signify the presence as the item night will be considered to have voted affirmatively on the consent items unless they filed proper vote modification forms with the city clerk. And we congratulate all those who received promotions and appointments, and also again express our best wishes to Mike Johnson and his family, thank them for their service, and also same to Paul Clark for his longtime service in Transit Division. So the consent items are adopted. Next item is old business. Does anyone have any old business? New business, we have 10.1, which is a discussion of the grant application that was moved from the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to discuss that? Commissioner Bowers?
Well, I'm just... I have a couple of questions. If somebody from Parks is here to address the questions that Ms. Bramwich, or the, I guess I should say, the comments that she made. I guess my first question is, will they actually accept a grant if it's submitted after the due date?
Rebecca submitted the grant. She thinks they will.
She thinks they will.
She's not here, so I can't answer for her.
I just thought that Ms. Bramwich made some good points, and I...
We know it's a little bit late, but we do try to, when we can get grants, especially the non-matching.
If we were to get... I haven't seen the application, but if we were to get it and we decided to redirect some of that money to different parks, would that be possible?
You'd have to ask Rebecca, but I think the parks that were listed would have to be some of the parks included. I don't know the exact details.
Well, do you know when...
They will send us... If we get the grant, which is a big if, I mean, I'm sure there's thousands of departments that are going to apply for it, they would send us the toolkits and the information that we need to do the program.
That's music to my ears.
That's a good one.
Is that friendly? You know, I'm...
Yeah, they would give us the information. You know, we're always looking to get kids out of the homes and into the parks and do environmental education. We thought this would be something, since it was non-matching, that we would be able to do.
Well, I haven't actually seen the application, but I've been looking at some questions and comments here, and one of those comments made was that kids, it has to be in a place where children, let's see, not limited to where children must be accompanied by a caregiver. So I could think one of the points was, is with one of those parks, how are those children going to get there without being accompanied? So I just wonder if all of those points have already been considered, I guess by Rebecca or those of you that actually put the grant together. I wanted to make sure that those points that we heard here tonight have actually been addressed, or... And the big one was, will they even accept the thing if it's late in submission? So...
We hope so.
Okay.
Again, I can't answer that. That'll be up to the person that receives the grant. But Jim did not, you know, Jim Parish got an email from NRPA. I don't know exactly when he got it.
Okay.
But we're always looking for, you know, grant opportunities, especially...
Right. I understand that. You know, if they were to give us a grant, that would be a great thing, but I guess after I heard some of the comments or questions posed tonight, they... She makes good points, and so, you know...
Well, it depends...
I'm wondering if when the grant...
We could maybe use some of the transit system to help us maybe get some of the kids there. That's a possibility.
Okay.
You know, the transit is a good resource for us.
I mean, once the grant is...
Of course, Dollar Graham will be up. You know, most of those kids live in Dollar Graham, in that area right there.
Well, my big question was, once the grant is approved, would there be room to go back and ask for adjustments to how it will be actually implemented? So, you don't know?
I'm not...
Okay.
I cannot... I don't want to give you an answer that's not true, no.
Do you have any further, Commissioner Bowers?
No. I just wanted to clarify that, make sure that... I'm not saying you don't address valid points, but I thought she made some good points, and to ask if those had actually been considered.
Yes, we have considered them.
Okay.
Commissioner, have further on it? Or just want to pass over it or vote on it?
If all those points have actually already been considered, we get a grant, that's great, so I don't want to stop us from getting a grant. I know a lot of times, grants cannot be accepted after an application due date, so... But if we can get a grant and we can figure out what to do, that's great. So I just make the motion that we approve and help to get a grant.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Bowers.
Excuse me. Do allow Ms. Gibbs a question. No, I have a question.
No, I'm sorry, Ms. Bramwich. I'm going to tell you something. You're not going to do that.
It's already been filed.
I just told you not to interrupt a meeting. And I'm going to be lenient about that, but as we go on...
I'd be happy to leave the meeting.
You don't have to leave the meeting.
It says this...
I just want you to stop talking, please. Ms. Bramwich? Okay. You see the police officer in the back of the room?
So it's kind of moot.
We'll answer your question. We've answered your questions, but I'm not going to allow you to interrupt meetings.
Well, Mayor, can I clear for now? Did I just make the motion to approve or filing, and it's already been filed? Is that what's happened? Has it been filed? Do you know?
Yes. You can tell me what you think your motion... You wanted to make a motion to...
I thought I was making the motion to file the grant, to approve the filing of the grant.
Okay. That's what I thought you were doing, to approve the filing application.
Okay.
It's already been filed. Correct, yeah.
Does anyone want a second? Or...
So we're approving something that's already been done as...
Well, now, I would presume she's filed it. I haven't talked to her personally.
Hold on a second. First, let me address this motion.
Jim Parish is the one that dealt with her on the grant.
Let me address the motion. Does anybody want to second it?
I will second that we continue with...
Okay. Second, about Commissioner Hittin.
7.7 moving to 10.1 and moving forward.
Now, anyone have any other questions? Have you had a motion?
I assume we've already filed it.
I would...
That'd be my assumption.
That would be my assumption. But she's not here, and I did not deal with her on that.
And I understand that, and without her here, we really can't figure very much out, would be my guess. But so we've already filed it. This is sort of basically an information-type thing, because if it's already been filed, we can't vote no on it if it's already been filed.
But we usually do bring it before you have to give permission.
Right. I understand. And am I correct, and I talked to Jim Parish about this last week, and just make sure I haven't forgotten this, isn't this a pretty tough one to get? Isn't there just a handful of them?
There's just a few.
And they largely would usually go to big urban areas as opposed to somewhere like Frankfurt?
Yes.
Okay.
There's not many, and if I was a betting man, it wouldn't be a good bet, but you know...
That's what I figured. So we might be worried about something that might not happen.
Pretty good chance it won't happen, but, you know, we feel obligated to try, so that's what we do.
And I think those are good questions, so maybe a way to make this smoother in the future is, of course, the calendar always doesn't work to our advantage as far as when you know stuff, but to find out about it before...
Yes, I would just say, under no circumstances do I ever want to be voting on something that has already been done. It makes my vote completely meaningless. So I feel like this is a completely meaningless activity here tonight, although what I would like to say is, I hope we get the grant. And I hope that some of those comments that I heard, which sounded good to me, and again, I've not looked at the application, but I would assume that you all have, but if there are good recommendations that can be made if we get the grant and if we're allowed, you know, wiggle room...
Make some modifications.
For changes, to take some of those recommendations that may come to us after it's submitted, I just don't want to think that anything we ever do has to be completely final if it can be improved upon, but I really don't want to vote for something that's already been done because it makes a joke of my vote. So can I ask, Mayor, that we ask the staff to never put something on the consent agenda that's already been done, please?
I think that's duly noted.
In the future, in the future, not now. This has been done, and I hope that we get the grant, by the way.
Thanks. Do you want to add something? Unless somebody's...
I just... Just real quickly, as I wanted to say, that in some circumstances, due to timing, we have placed items on the agenda to confirm action that has been taken so that the city commission is kept well aware of what's going on and agrees with what's been done. So I would just want to ask that staff still be allowed to place items on the agenda for confirmation where if that's necessary, where action has had to have been taken due to a short turnaround.
Yeah.
And it only happens very rarely.
I just wanted to say first...
I don't think it should happen at all. I'm sorry.
Ms. Haynes?
I'm not going to discuss the process because we're already where we are, but we'd like to say I'm glad to see that there was no matching funds required because I would not have wanted to see anything that's already been sent, funds, if we were being obligated for future funds, even though it does say in the future, you know, we may get some matching funds there. And I actually think it'd be great if we get more park activities and get the kids out. I did not know the answer to the one question about how we're going to get the kids up to Coast Spring Fort Hills, but that's something that, while this process is ongoing, maybe take a look at those, because, you know, that is a good point.
That is a good point.
You don't want to have something and the kids can't get there.
Nothing's ever going to be completely perfect, and there's some things we have to work on, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Bowers.
Oh, no.
No, you know, we should...and we normally don't do that, and I'm sorry for that.
Well, and I'm just getting here in January, so I don't know what was done before I got here, so, no, I'm not trying to chastise anyone. I'm just saying, in the future, if we could just please refrain from having the commission approve something that's already been a done deal, because we really, in my opinion, don't need to be voting on something that's already been done, but I sincerely hope that we do get the grant, and that if there is wiggle room to ask for changes in what we do with that money, if those suggestions are good, that that will be taken into account. But I just...my big question was, how can we obtain a grant that's past the deadline, but it's already been done, so that's fine?
That was actually going to be my last point.
Commissioner Henn, he had his hand up next.
No, I didn't finish. She jumped in.
We're good.
I jumped in.
She jumped in before.
Go ahead. I thought you had the floor too.
But she almost covered the one point I was talking about, you know, if it's past the deadline, one, if it's in, it is a moot point, and if it's not in, it's moot.
I'm sure Rebecca's already probably said it, I would think, but she's not here yet.
Okay. Thank you.
And like I said, I apologize. We usually do bring things before you all get permission, before we proceed.
Yeah, I understand that.
Any other questions that I...
Real fast, because I'm ready to...I'm sure you're ready to go on to the next thing.
That's okay. That's what I'm here for.
The...I agree with 90%, what Commissioner Bowers said, or 95%, but I don't believe it's going to be possible to always have something ahead of time. My guess is you got this grant in early January, the application, I'm just guessing, and I'm going to further guess that it wasn't possible to get it to us any quicker, so I don't want to lose...I go along with the city attorney, I don't want to, on those rare occasions when we're confirming something, I don't want to lose the opportunity to get something free or to do something, but I would just want to have it as rare as possible.
And just one point on grants, because it affects the budget, you know, we want to make sure, you know, whether it's money coming in or money we have to spend, but it is money coming in that we do have to account for in our budget, and that's why we want to get commission approval for them, so that the commission will know that that has a budget impact, either positively or negatively.
And phrase it down.
And may I just also say, the regularly scheduled work sessions are regular meetings, so we actually could vote in those.
We have an order that says we don't.
That we're not going to vote, okay. Well, then, I guess we could go from a work session into a special meeting, could we not? And do a vote on something that came up on an emergency level like that? So we had a work session two weeks ago, so we actually could have gone from work session into special meeting and given the consent for this to move forward, and I would much rather it happen that way. I don't want to know that something's been done that requires my vote, and my vote has not been requested until after it's a done deal. So I would just recommend in the future that if something comes up like this, that we do go into a special meeting from a work session where we can get that vote, because I think it makes it cleaner, and I'm certainly more comfortable with that.
Commissioner Henn.
With a special called meeting, don't we...are we still restricted to the timeframe, though? We can't just have a work session and then decide to go into a special meeting? We still have to call a special meeting a few days out? We couldn't just go right into a special meeting after a work session?
Oh, yes, we can.
But you do have to provide the notice to...
The notice has to go to the public.
As long as it meets the requirements of Open Meetings Act.
Under mess...I'm sorry.
Commissioner Henn.
So we could...a special called meeting can be called right after a work session?
With the proper notice.
With the proper notice.
You have to plan to do it.
Any other questions for me?
Well, wait a minute. I'm going to ask you.
Oh, yeah, wait a minute.
Commissioner, do you have any further?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Bowers, go ahead.
Is the proper notice...
Thank you, Jim.
Two days, is that right?
Twenty-four hours.
Is the proper notice...
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours. So certainly, there's not going to be very many times that in under 24 hours, the staff would not know that we're going to need...that a special meeting may be called, so...but that's a whole different motion than this item right now, so I think probably we ought to entertain a motion on this item, and then from here on out, I guess we can talk about what we want to do with the other. But I think we need to go with 10. whatever with the motion at this point.
It's 10.1 of the new business, which was the old 7.7 under consent.
I don't know.
It's the filing, approving an application for the grant for the park system.
Motion and seconded, don't we?
We did. She's talking about...
Well, then I'll call for the question.
Okay. I did want to ask one quick question of our parks director. Since it was an electronic...well, it doesn't matter who answers. It's electronic application, so did that require a subsequent paper application? We don't know. We don't know. Because I know, and I know this commission doesn't want to micromanage, and I know they don't want to cut citizens off, but when we have a...we're having a formal meeting, I'm not going to allow folks to disrupt the meeting.
Sorry, Mayor, if I jumped in.
No, and I'm talking about you, and also about Ms. Bramwich. So I wanted to ask the question that she wanted to ask, which was, who signed it? And I think the answer is, we don't know if there was a paper application, but understanding it was electronic. In the interest...I know this commission wants to have citizen input, but we're not going to allow people to be disruptive at our meetings. So the difference was, Commissioner Henn asked Ms. Gibbs a question, and that's why we allowed that, and also took discretion to extend Ms. Gibbs's time under our rules procedure at the discretion of the chair by a few seconds, just for citizen input. I would say, too, further, when we call for a question, I usually have two people call for the question, and we'll go ahead and vote, and I want to make a quick statement after, so anyone else? Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Henn?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Henn?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes. Item is adopted. And one thing I do want to say, I think, just a directive to the staff, is the commission doesn't want to micromanage, but at the same time, I think they do expect to be kept in, from what I hear, kept informed on what's going on, so if something happens between work sessions and regular sessions, if there's going to be an application or anything that needs...that's going to need to be ratified at a later date, I think maybe we just direct the city manager to direct the staff to make sure that they get that information to the city manager, and the city clerk can give that to us, and if we feel the need for a special meeting, we can call that, or if there's any objections, you could state your objections to the city manager, and that might address that without having to feel...make the staff feel like they're hamstrung, because there are some times when deadlines pop up, and I know the commission wouldn't want to miss that, but at the same time, I think the commission does expect to be informed about it. She's especially if they're going to vote. All right, thank you. Any other new business? Commissioner Roach?
I just got one thing, real quick, this sort of for the public, not necessarily...probably everybody in here is pretty informed about it, but, you know, when we had a meeting on Friday, that was a continuation of a planning meeting, and if you read the paper on Sunday, you might have got the sense that it was a...you know, that there was a lot of division. And so I just wanted to clarify that we had 44 items that we went over, and 41 of them, all five members of the commission were for, either to do it or to explore it. Two of them, they were against...there was one person against, happened to be me, or one or two, and it happened to be me, and then there was one that we were going to get more information about. So I think, as good as the paper has been to me when I was an educator and for this community, I think we missed the forest for the trees. The forest was, is that this group worked hard to compromise, trying to follow what Burke said about politics being the art of compromise, and so we gave and take...there was a lot of give and take, so that we had everybody on board on most things. And so, and I think we also saw that people were willing to avoid ideology and being an ideologue and taking just a fixed position and saying, forget the rest of you all. I think what the main article should have been was how united the commission was, how much they want to get accomplished, and how the next step is to have deadlines for all of these things, so that we can actually hold ourselves accountable and the staff accountable. So I want the community to know that although we will disagree, I think it'll be principled, and I don't think there'll be a lot of acrimony, and that the main thing would be, is that there's a whole lot of stuff that we plan on doing the next two to four years, and that was the main story, and not that there was a division among the commission. That's my two sayings.
Thank you, Commissioner Roach. Any other new business to address? If not, next item is a closed session per KRS 61810 sub 1 sub F for personnel.
I move that we adjourn to closed session for personnel.
Did you mean to...I'm clarifying that. Did you want to adjourn or recess to closed session?
Recess, well, that we go into closed session at this time for personnel items.
Personnel to 61810, one F.
You have to say the whole thing?
Yeah, well, let me put the glasses on.
Way out there.
Okay, I move that we go into closed session per KRS 61.810 for personnel.